I'd like to call this regularly scheduled and duly posted meeting of the Harlem City Commission to Order. This time, I'd like to call upon Commissioner Vasilio Gino Sanchez to deliver our invitation.
Thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask you, and you guys, the mayor, the city commissioners, and me today, we will discuss from the business of area of the city, to make the best decision today for the community, for the city of Harlem. My content blesses the great community in way we ask you to be blessed. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to their calling for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our City Commission meeting. We're glad to have you here. And we're going to begin with a public announcement of events on number one, and our public information officer, Dave Ralph, will tell us about that.
Good evening. This weekend, we're going to have a very busy weekend in Harlem. We've got the 24th Annual Jalapeno 100 Bicycle Event, starting, I believe, the first one is at 7:30, the start time for the bike ride, and there's five different lengths that bikers will be traveling on. And as soon as the bikers are off, there'll be a 5K run walk and a 10K run walk, so there's going to be a lot of physical fitness type events available. And then there'll be the First Annual Jalapeno Festival, also at Long Sea Hill Park. That'll start at 11 o'clock and go until 8 o'clock. There's going to be a lot of family activities there. And we've got some sponsors here in the community that have helped provide these events. All the benefits from the bicycling event will go to the Harlem Boys and Girls Club, so we hope to have a good turnout for that. The Jalapeno Festival, we'll have, last I heard, there's going to be 11 live bands there, Miss Jalapeno Pageant, Classic Car Show, a Jalapeno Cook-Off, for those of you that want to test your taste buds, and Harley-Davidson Jump Start Event also. So there'll be plenty of activities on Saturday from 11 to 8 with the First Annual Festival, and it's free admission, so the price is definitely in my budget. For upcoming events also this weekend, there will be the Miss South Texas Senior Pageant on February 23 at 2:00 p.m. I can't see exactly all the fine print there, but I believe admission is $10 there at the municipal auditorium. There's going to be a lot of entertainment involved with that also, so we're hoping to have a real good turnout for it yet. Also on Saturday, if there isn't already enough to do, and you're at home wanting to get a jump start on spring cleanup, we've got Trash Off Day. It's community-wide from 8 to 12 at Pendleton Park on the south parking lot towards Grimes Avenue. And it's going to be trash drop-off, debris drop-off from your yard, your house. It's for free. Acceptable items include furniture, appliances, although no free-on, like in a refrigerator or freezer or something, limited for tires, and electronic devices. They don't want any contractors. It's just for residential purposes. You've got to live inside the city limits and provide a current water bill and valid identification. We're hoping that will be a real good start to this season's community cleanup type of events. Also, in upcoming events, the Harlem Public Library, and this is sponsored by the Consulate of Mexico from Brownsville, will have some Spanish movies at the library auditorium. All movies are directed by Luis Buñuel. The first one will be Wednesday, February 26 at 6:30, and there'll be some more movies on that we'll be announcing at the future City Commission meetings, and those are rather lengthy. Also, the Harlem Public Library is going to be offering their spring classes for adults and kids, so please go to that website or call the library at 216-5800 for details about all of those activities. And that concludes the upcoming events. You can also check our website for updates, too.
Okay. Pastor Mark Rolino also will announce what we're going to publicly announce.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'd just like to invite the city leadership out to the Third Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast 2014, March 5, Thursday, Harlem Community Center. Doors open at 7:00 a.m. The program is from 7:30 to 9:00. It is sponsored by Chick-fil-A this year. Private Committee has been meeting, Private Committee of Citizens have been meeting the last couple of months, putting the event together, and we've raised money from private citizens and corporate support. So it's a free event to the community. All costs are covered. Tickets are available for pickup for the public at First Community Bank and Texas Regional Bank on Business 77. So any citizen can walk in, and there'll be tickets available. This year, the theme is again, "Hope in the Community." It's a brand-new lineup. For those that have been before, we're going to have both high school football coaches speaking. Coach Wilson from Harlem South will be speaking on creating an environment of hope. Coach Gomez from Harlem will be speaking on sustaining hope, and then Bill Regan will be speaking on giving hope to the hopeless. So we just want to invite all of the city leadership and the citizens of the city of Harlem to come out. You have to have a ticket to get in because of fire code issues. We have to honor that. I believe we'll only hold so many people. There's about 150 tickets left, so you have about two weeks to get them. We look forward to seeing you all. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Mark. Look for your leadership on that. So item two is the presentation of proclamations, and the first proclamation is February 25, 2014, as Miss South Texas Senior Pageant Day. So if the representatives of the South Texas Senior Pageant Day would like to come up here, I'd like to have you up here at the stand in front of our logo, in front of the city logo, and kind of look in that direction so that they can take your picture. This is a great, this is a great event, a great program, and we want to recognize everybody associated with this. A great event. And here's proclamation to celebrate your pageant. Whereas the, this Miss South Texas Senior Pageant honors and celebrates the inner beauty of the senior women by recognizing senior women who exemplify the dignity, knowledge, and experience of maturity. And whereas the pageant is designed to foster the involvement of seniors in their communities by rewarding their achievements, contributions, and efforts, and to encourage personal growth and promote self-esteem. And whereas the Miss Senior America philosophy is based on the belief that seniors are the foundation of America. And whereas the program was initiated one year ago by Eliot Lopez, organizations and individuals committed to promote a positive image of aging, which includes the reigning Miss South Texas Senior Amelia Rendon 2013, community volunteers, business representatives, and the city of Harlem, Texas. Therefore, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlem, hereby proclaim February 25, 2014, as Miss South Texas Senior Pageant Day, and call upon all citizens to recognize this special day.
Thank you.[534.29][534.29](Applause)
One more shot for Dave.
We'll take one, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Good luck to all the contestants. All right. Thank you. Congratulations. Our next proclamation, I think we're going to have the Shriners to come up here, the Shriners organization, with this one. The next proclamation, Item B, IHOP's National Pancake Day and Shriners Hospitals for Children's Day. Gentlemen, thank you for being with us here today. Oh, yeah. Okay. This is another great event for our community, and we want to recognize everybody involved in this program. Whereas Shriners Hospitals for Children, a national organization committed to giving children the opportunity to live a more normal life. And whereas Shriners Hospitals for Children gives children the opportunity to receive treatment for orthopedic problems, severe burns, and severe injury, and provides them with a head start in developing a normal life, regardless of the patients' ability to pay, that is essential to becoming successful and contributing adults. And whereas on March 4, 2014, Shriners Hospitals for Children and IHOP will join together to encourage people to donate to Shriners Hospitals for Children activities in our city. If therefore resolved, I, Chris Boswell, Mayor of the City of Harlem, in recognition of this important event, to hereby proclaim March 4, 2014, in Harlem, to add IHOP's National Pancake Day and Shriners Hospitals for Children Day, and urge all citizens to show their support and pledge a donation to Shriners Hospitals for Children activities on this very special day. Is anybody here from IHOP?
No, I told you.
All right. We want to salute, we want to salute the owners of IHOP and our local community for partnering with the Shriners to make this a great event to give some of our disadvantaged folks and children an opportunity that they deserve, that they wish they wanted.
I tell you, maybe you don't know what IHOP does. I mean, you order your breakfast or whatever meal you're at. You order your drink, pray for your drink, put the rest of the money in the IHOP, in the Shriners bucket out there.
Okay, so give generously, and don't, and let everybody go to IHOP on March 4.
Thank you.[735.82][735.82](Applause)
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Item three, presentation of certificates of appreciation to recognize two TSTC students who designed the graphics for the Governor's Chief Award Application Grant prepared by city staff, and to Mr. Yuvalo Perezas, TSTC instructor, for his cooperation and participation. Carlos, why don't you tell everybody about this program?
Well, basically, we've had a longstanding relationship with TSTC students. We've had interns that have helped us with the GIS system, and in this particular case, they helped to design the cover page for the grant that was submitted to the Governor's Award. So we're certainly grateful for everything they've done, and thank them for all their efforts.
So we have a beautiful grant application. Krista Quades, TSTC student, helped us with it, as well as Gilbert Guerra, who helped us with it. He's also a student. And their instructor, Yuvalo Perezas, who also guided them. I'm just glad that it's really fantastic work here. We thank you so much for everything you all do.
Right.
Anything?
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Okay, great. Thanks for the help.
Thank you so much.
We have board recognition. And that is, yeah, in that sphere, in that sphere here, yeah. I thought I called you out there. Well, we want to present this to you, and thank you for your dedication, Senior Citizens Advisory Board. She knows a little bit, knows a little bit about that. And the director over there, Golden Palms, and she helps a lot around a little bit. Thank you so much for your... Okay, and then Item Five, Neighborhood Cleanup Held February 15, 2014, from Garfield Street to Grant Street between J&amp;L Street and District 4.
Mayor, as usual, we'll give you a rundown of what happened on February 15, which is District 4, Commissioner Sanchez's area. You go back here. This is the area where we had the clean sweep, and you can see some of the items that were removed from the area, mattresses and, you know, a lot of items. The city of Harlem, along with volunteers, conducted a clean sweep on Saturday, February 15, and they removed 10.14 tons of debris. And you see some of, some more of the items that were removed from the area. We got a total of 27 tires that were also removed from the area. They started about at 8:30 a.m. and concluded about noon time. You see some of our employees clearing out all the debris. You see some of the volunteers assisting. Overall, it was a great success. We had the volunteers that helped us to clean up our neighborhood, and, you know, we're certainly grateful that they volunteered their time. We want to thank them. We want to thank the Code Enforcement Department, Commissioner Sanchez, the mayor for boys, Michael James for assisting and for helping make this a success. Next month's cleanup is going to be here in District 3, between Hill and Clescas Street in March.
Is Michael James here? Michael, come on up, please. Michael, we'd like to present the certificate of appreciation to you for your help with the Neighborhood Clean Sweep, and, you know, these are important to our community because we really feel like our cleanup for community, that we could take more pride in our community, that people want to invest in our community, visitors want to come to our community.
Yes, sir. I believe so, too.
Good. Good job. Thank you. And the folks on the clubhouse aren't here tonight. They had another event to go to. You're going to get those certificates, too. All right. Thank you, Mike. Item Six, this will be a presentation by Eduardo Figueroa, the Convention Business Bureau Director, regarding marketing and advertising in Mexico by the City of Harlem Convention and Business Bureau.
Good evening, Mayor Boswell, city commissioners. This is going to be a short presentation of what the CBD has done in marketing and advertising in Mexico. Here, what we have here, the flyers that we distribute in our bridge in McAllen area and also in the Brownfield area. These go direct to the consumer that cross the bridge every season, and holidays and vacation seasons. And this has been a very good success with shopping here in the area, mainly with the Bass Pro Shop, that is one of the stores that have been reporting a good situation of the Mexican shoppers. This is another one of the publications we have. It's the VIP magazine that also is distributed in the bridges. And in Mexico, we have different newspapers and magazines. In the main newspapers that have the best situation in different cities. This is in Monterey. It's the Texas and tourist in the Brismo magazine with almost 56,000 print. And these are the months that we have the distribution. Usually, we go with the seasons, the vacations and holidays. This is what we print. Sometimes, we have a very good deal because we pay one ad, and they give us two or three center pages and editorials free. This is South Valerian. It's another magazine that also is distributed by the Norton in Monterey. This is another magazine and newspaper that is Empezas, that goes directly to the people that have seen companies and corporate companies in Monterey, and this is one of the markets that we want to target. Here's the how we have the advertising in different cities. La Razón de Tampico. We have special issue also Texas and Tanovlipas, El Diario de Ciudad Victoria, El Impulso de San Luis Potosí. And these are the printed issues that we have here. This is one of the ads we put in El Diario Internacional in Victoria. El Impulso Diario de San Luis, also one of the main newspapers in the city of San Luis Potosí. And we have editorials and center pages also in all of these newspapers. Here's the La Razón in Tampico. And this is the Texas in Tanovlipas, or the magazine that also is distributed with the newspaper in Tampico. Here's another of the advertising we have with center pages, and not just advertising, just talking also about the other attractions we have here in Harlem. The Shopping and the Valley, one of the main magazines that is distributed along the both sides of the border in Mexico and the United States. It's a very good magazine that a lot of people, is free for the people, and so they read it. This is how it's distributed, The Shopping and the Valley, and you can see the cities in both sides, in the valley and here in Mexico. Forty thousand issues are distributed. This is another magazine that is published by The Shopping and the Valley. It's The Shopping Map. It's twice a year, every six months, and we are also in this magazine with the map and advertising. This is the advertising. We have it also twice in the Tévez Estaca Mexico, advertising 20-second TV spots. We have one in the summertime, for the vacation summertime, and for the Christmas and November and December holidays. And this is also, the spots are viewed in Guadalupe, in Tanovlipas, in both sides of the border. Here is how it distributes the signal that they cover in the signal in these states, and that's a lot of people that we target with this advertising. This is one of the first travel show we participated in Mexico City. And it was very good. It's a lot of people that attend this travel show, and it's the first time that Harlem participated in this, in Mexico City. And we start putting Harlem in the map. A lot of people asked for Harlem. Where is Harlem? And we start talking about Harlem because everybody knew and knows about Brownfield and McAllen, but now we are in the map. This is one of the pictures that we were in. We participate with the tourist office of the governor in Austin. We cooperate with them because those booths are very, very expensive. So participating with them, we save a lot of money, and we have the participation there. This border ads, it's a digital screen having the veterans and bar bridges. It's a 12-second spot every four minutes during the bridge schedules. Let me see. I don't know if we can run the... There is a, not in the back. We cannot click in the center? So to look at the ad?
Oh, this one.
Yes? I don't know. No?
No.
Okay. Well, I tried to just to show how it, the ad. In the bridges, we did say border ads, we have the advantage that when we have an event, a special event or festival, you just call them, send them the information, the pictures or the posters, and they put it in the screen. So it's a continue. We have all the advertising and the program and the promotion of our events and the attraction here in the city. This is Bass Pro Shops. The Bass Pro Shop gave us this letter and the recognition that working with us, we helped a lot of the Bass Pro Shop to bring people to their shop. So it's really, Bass Pro Shop is always in the main page and the first pictures, and they honor our advertising. And they told us that we have been a lot of people coming from Mexico. So it's a good, a good advertising, and they are very, very thankful with us. And that's it for the moment. And in the future, I can show you also what the CBD has done in the States and Canada, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
If you might have any questions for Eduardo for his presentation. Okay, thank you. And that was, I knew we were advertising in Mexico, but I didn't know to the extent, and so I'm glad to get that report and see how much we're doing. And I knew that Jesse was happy at Bass Pro Shop, because I talked to him not too long ago, and he was very pleased with the flyers, and says they really get good traffic over there, and that they're, they're buying boats. Figure that out, but anyway, that's great.
We were in talks with him. They are going to put a campaign in other cities in Mexico with other media, but I recommended what media they can use in San Luis, in Tampico, Victoria, and Mexico City, Guanajuato, and they are very, very excited to do that.
Good. All right. Thank you for the presentation. Item Seven, Approval of Minutes, February 5, 2014. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing now, I think it's a motion to approve the minutes.
I move the minutes be approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign motion carries. I'm going to take Item 8A out of the consent agenda and pass it because we're not ready on that tonight. We had some questions that we're still working to give the answers on about the 2012 International Codes. So I'll just take up Items 8B and C from the consent agenda. It's a motion to approve Items 8B and C.
So move.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like, sign motion carries. Item Nine, Public hearing considering ordinance of first reading amending ordinance number 11-27 for a request to amend specific use permit issued to George Dowey to allow the existing bar lounge, the point, to expand services to the second floor of the building in a general GR district located at 115 East Harrison, bearing a legal description of blocks 17 and 18 to block 70, Harlem original townsite, applicant George Dowey.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The applicant has requested to amend his existing specific use permit to allow his bar lounge, the point, to expand to the second floor of the building. This is a subject property. You can see it's located on the north side of Harrison Avenue between First and Second Street. This is the existing building here. The request is to continue to operate with the same operating hours generally from Sunday to Tuesday from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 midnight, and then from Wednesday to Saturday from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. The request does comply with the parking requirements. The applicant is also obtaining permission from the Bank of America property to use their parking lot for additional parking required. The request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Neither of the departments had any objections to the request, subject to complying with appropriate codes. Public hearing was also conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission, and there was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff at P&amp;Z Commission are recommending approval subject to the applicant, providing and maintaining the required parking. The applicant also has to continue to provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation. He also has to continue maintaining his TABC license, as well as maintaining the surveillance video on property, as well as complying with the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions when you have them.
Is there a second story in this building?
Yes, there is.
So none of this would involve rooftop activity?
Right.
It's a big, it's a big building. It's a, there's a lot of room on the second floor. All right. Item A is a... All right, item A is a public hearing. Open the public hearing and see if anyone would like to speak for or against this ordinance. Hearing no, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance amending the ordinance number 11-27 to amend the specific use permit to allow the point bar lounge to expand services to the second floor of the building in general retail district of the described location. Can you read the caption for it?
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27 of the city Harlingen to amend the existing specific use permit ordinance 11-17 issued to George Dowey to allow an adult business bar lounge on the second floor of the building in general retail district located at 115 East Harrison, bearing a legal description of lots 17 and 18, block 70, Harlingen original town size, subject to one, providing and maintaining required off-street parking spaces and providing documentation to allow shared parking in the adjacent lots. Two, continuing to provide a licensed security guard during peak hours of operation, Thursday through Saturday from 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. Three, continuing to provide active lighting around all bar lounge building entrances and exits. Four, continuing to provide surveillance video and maintaining a 30-day retention of the video. Five, maintaining the TABC license and continuing TABC compliance. And six, comply with requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, health, police and fire prevention departments, provided for publication or obtaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion about the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed like sign of motion carries. Item 10, it's a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading amending ordinance number 9-34 for a four-day request to amend the specific use permit issued to Armenia Cervantes for adult business, Poki's Planet, for 1111 and 1113 West Tyler Avenue to allow the expansion of the adult business to include 1109 and 1107 West Tyler Avenue, and with the request to review the annual audit bearing a legal description of the east five feet of lot 2, all blocks 3 through 6, and the east 10 feet of lot 7, block B Bogus Rousey subdivision, applicant Armenia Cervantes.
Mayor and commissioners, the applicant is requesting to amend their existing specific use permit to allow for their adult business known as Poki's Planet to expand into two additional suites that are currently under construction in their commercial plaza. As you can see, this is the original Poki's Planet that became the specific use permit, and this is one that's currently under construction. They're proposing to expand to these two suites here for their business. Many of the, two additional suites would consist of the smoking accessories products and of course their existing business to the, to the west would be for, where they have their lingerie products and adult products and establishment. The hours of operation will continue to be the same. You can see the request does comply with the appropriate city departments. The applicant is also requesting that their annual audit be reviewed as part of the requirement for the specific use permit for the past three, five years. They've been submitting an annual audit basically to show the percentage of sales for sexual products in the last five years. Cycles have ranged from anywhere from 25 to 33 percent. This past year that they submitted an audit, it was at 31 percent. The request was reviewed by appropriate city departments. Neither of the departments had any objections to the request, subject to complying with the appropriate codes. We did notify property owners within a 200-foot radius of the property, which is included about 23 property owners. Staff didn't receive any objections to the request. We did receive one call from one property owner who voiced support of the specific use amendment. Staff is recommending approval. The P&amp;Z Commission also recommends approval subject to the applicant providing and maintaining the required parking, maintaining a solid fence in the rear of the property and complying with the requirements from the planning department, the health department, the police department, the building inspections department, and the fire prevention department. I'll take any questions on the item. The applicant has also presented questions.
Was there a reason we asked for audit?
There was a reason because there was a question for the business, you know, whether it was going to be more of an adult business or sexual oriented business, which are two different types of business, which kind of different requirements. There's also a distance requirement for a sexual oriented business from the church and the school. For adult business, there is no distance requirement from the church or school. So they had to submit the audit for those, when the SVP was approved, to show that it was more of an adult business, not a sexual oriented business.
So when they make this change, they're going to have one type of business in one building and a different type of business in the other building?
It's going to be the same business, only the thing is they're going to expand their inventory to, to the new suites and then keep some of the products on the existing building. But it's going to be the same business.
So the expanding of the lots doesn't encroach on, what would you term, school or church?
Right. The current requirement for adult business complies with the distance requirement, because actually there is no requirement for, there is no distance requirement for adult business from a church or school. There is one for a sexual oriented business, but not in adult business.
But the inclusion of expanding the lots, expanding your business, that doesn't encroach on those territories?
Item A, which is a public hearing. I'll open the hearing. Is anyone who would like to speak for or against this amendment to the specific use Hearing nobody, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is considered to take action to approve and adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 09-34 to amend the existing specific use permit for Poki's Planet to allow the expansion of the adult business to include the described locations.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27, the city Harlingen to amend the existing specific use permit, ordinance 9-34 for adult business Poki's Planet issued to Armenia Cervantes for 1111 and 1113 West Tyler Avenue to allow for the expansion of the adult business to include 1109 and 1107 West Tyler Avenue, and with the request to remove the annual audit, bearing a legal description of the east five feet of the lot, lot 2, all of blocks 3 through 6, and the east 10 feet of lot 7, block B Bogus Rousey subdivision, subject to one, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking in accordance with the city regulations, providing and maintaining a solid fence in the rear of the property and complying, three, complying with the requirements administered by planning and zoning building inspections, environmental health, fire prevention and police departments, for publication and obtaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion about the ordinance of first reading?
So moved.
Second, or any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed... Motion carries. We're going to take up item 12 before we take up item 11 because they're related and they should have been put in this order, I think, to begin with. So item 12, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the Harlingen zoning ordinance number 07-27, section 17.05, specific use permit process to establish standard conditions for a call center in an office district, applicant planning and zoning commission.
Mayor and commissioners, the staff received direction from the P&amp;Z Commission after January, P&amp;Z Commission to establish conditions for when a call center requests to come into the city and it's an office district and require a specific use permit. Under the current regulations, like I said, office call centers are allowed in a general retail, light industry and heavy industry district, and most recently they're allowed in an office district with a specific use permit. There's also currently a setback regulations whenever a commercial business is going to be located adjacent to a residential district, they got to maintain a 10-foot setback along the solid fence on that particular sign. There's also specific parking requirement, which the current parking regulations for a call center is one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area. This was an amendment due to the zoning laws back in 2003, which, that amendment came into place. Prior to that, the parking was based on 1 to 400 square feet of floor area.
Hang on a second. Julian, I'd like to recognize Julian Alvarez. Before he leave, we'd like to recognize you. Thank you for being on our meeting, CEO of Valley Partnership. We appreciate your, your being here with us tonight. Sorry to interrupt.
The request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments and staff is recommending that a traffic impact analysis be submitted with a concert that has more than 70 employees. That section is included, opposed to the attached ordinance, which you have here in place and with your packets. Staff recommend approval subject to the ordinance. The P&amp;Z Commission at the last P&amp;Z Commission recommended an additional condition that the parking requirement would have to be changed when it's an office district where it would be based on one parking space for every 100 square feet of floor area, instead of the current one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area. Take any questions on the item?
All right. Is there a... I go to item A, which is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against this ordinance? No? Okay. Please state your name, your address.
My name's Robert Gandy and I work with the owners of the property. There's, we have currently out there 262 parking spaces, which is pretty close to the 150 per, 150 feet per parking requirement. If we have to go to the 100, it's going to kill the deal. We just don't have enough land area to have 100. I think the 100 is, you know, I was at the P&amp;Z meeting and it was sort of, they were heaping all their problems with another property onto us and saying that, you know, we don't want you to be like X. There's no way in the world that, that each, that each person is going to be using less than 150 feet on average, because they have three shifts on these things. So I think you've got to really be careful that you're going to price yourself or legislate yourself out of this business. I did a quick calculation, at 250 employees, if they made 20,000 a year, that's $5 million in payroll, whatever multiplier CPA wants to use, seven or 11 or 10 or whatever, it's big payrolls. And so I think it behooves the commission to really think seriously about trying to accommodate this type of use based on the old requirement. We could, we could meet the old requirement, we can't meet this, this new requirement.
Question, if memory serves me correct, when that building was occupied by Valley Diagnostic Clinic, they rented the parking lot from the Presbyterian Church that's adjacent to the property. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's, yeah, the property actually purchased that parking lot that's on sort of the east side of the church. So the clinic or the BDC property owns that parking fee symbol.
Okay, so all these calculations are including that parking?
Yes. Existing there today is 262 spaces. With 150 feet per, 150 feet per space, it would require 267. We can build, you know, a few more spaces behind where there's a bunch of sort of dilapidated frame buildings there that will be removed. But we can't build another, you know, can't build another 150 spaces.
How is the calculation made if the building has 20,335 square feet?
It's a two-story building.
So, but, so the square footage would be double that?
Right, correct.
So that's just the footprint of a building?
Yeah, I mean, they're taking account hallways, restrooms, lobbies, you know, mechanical rooms, elevators.
I have a question for city, then. Go over the square foot. Thank you again, please, or with us, please. So I fully understand.
The current parking requirements for a call center, it's one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area. This particular building, which is a former Valley Diagnostic Building, has a little over 40,000 square feet. So they're, they're requiring to have, under the current ordinance, 272 spaces. They have 262 on the site and they're proposing to add 10 additional spaces in the rears of the property behind the building to meet the current parking requirements. If they were to go with a 1 to 100, one for every 100 square feet of floor area, they would be required to have about 407 parking spaces. So they'd be probably about 100, they'd be short about 135 spaces in the ordinary area.
And then where is the wisdom in increasing the, the square footage or decreasing in whatever way, from 150 to 100?
Well, the P&amp;Z board, when they made the decision or during the public hearing felt that since in some call centers, they can operate by a smaller space, a space as small as six by six.
And when was this discussion held? Recently or, you mentioned 2003?
This was held at our last P&amp;Z commission, which was a week ago. They also alluded to a previous call center that opened up a little over 10 years ago. There was, the parking department was based under a different parking requirement, which is 1 to 400, which was just for a regular office, because at that time, back in 2002 or '03, staff didn't have a particular parking requirement for a call center. Since then, they've amended the ordinance and now there's a current parking department of one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area. We have an existing call center that, this is for reference of the...
Mayor? Current business target. But I, I approached staff this morning when I, and I said, we have a couple of existing call centers. If you'll go to the slide, this is the Dish Network. They are at 150 to 1. But if you look at this aerial photo, you'll notice number one, you don't have a, a lack of, I mean, a, there's not a lack of parking. On the right front of the building, that's the executive parking. To the left front, that's the visitor parking, and everything in the back is the employee parking. And so I was going to make the recommendation that we approve the, the change, but go back to the 150, because this is an existing one. We don't have a parking problem here. One thing that he brought up is it doesn't take into account the fact that there's going to be meeting rooms, that there's going to be a break room. And so when you start calculating so many feet for a cubicle, you can't just take the whole plot and say this is how much we need. And so I've been in this building before. This is the old Olivero plan. You walk in, they have a nice reception area, they have meeting rooms, training rooms and that type of, and they seem to get along okay. I know the concern that they have, there is one that's in town, and it's a fight. It's a fight.
Well, I mean, that, I think that is the, you know, what the, you know, what is the ratio now over ACT?
That, I don't have that permission.
I mean, that, that's where, you didn't get to live that one. That one was, you know, that's, when the, there was, when there's overflow, because these call centers, you know, they can, they can, they get a load of work in, they can really increase the number of people that they're putting in the building to, to accommodate. And if they go, you know, so in this instance, they were up to like 1,200 employees. And so the shifts were bigger. And so, you know, you ended up with parking, people parking in the neighborhood and they were parking, the employees were parking in front of people's houses. And that was the, that, you know, so BDC worked on that, would provide some, we ended up, they had to buy some additional parking, parking space behind Sun Valley Mall for, you know, to accommodate the overflow and let them use that instead of the employees parking out in the, in the neighborhood. So, I mean, that's why there's this sensitivity, because we've had, we had an issue in it. You know, we don't, we want you, we, we want you in that building, we want employees in that building, we want payroll, but we don't want to, we don't want to create some other, you know, another problem for the neighbors. And in this case, the neighbor happens to be, you know, our largest private employer and all of the medical community that we have there. We don't want to create problems for them. So I just want to be sure that if we go to 150, that we're not going to have a problem.
And actually, when they determined that parking requirement, that parking ratio for that particular call center that you were referring to, at that time, the parking ratio was 1 to 1 parking space for every 400 square feet of floor, which is, which was a requirement for a general office. At that time, the city didn't have a specific parking department for the call center. Of course, now there is one in place, which is one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area. So it's a different parking requirement back then for that particular, when it initially opened up.
Does the staff feel comfortable with the 1 to 150 ratio? The people that were at the P&amp;Z meeting didn't feel comfortable with that ratio, but...
I'm just wondering if there's not a way to cap the occupancy, maximum occupancy of the building so that we don't run into that same situation where all of a sudden, when times get good, we've got everybody standing up on the phone next to each other. I mean, do we anticipate how many people would be working there? I don't know. They're going to have different shifts, so it's kind of hard to say about the total employment. But back to the original point, is the ACT was under parked. But there was, it was soft. I mean, you know, the worst thing was you had too many people working. So what did the, you know, city and the landlord and the... and the employer had to figure out something. And I think that's, you know, that's kind of a good problem to have. We got too many people working at a location. So, I don't anticipate that if you just drive around that whole area, there's so much open land and so much parking that we could lease from the church if we really wanted to do it, if we really needed it at some point, where the employer can say, hey, we're going to, you know, we'll make some arrangements to lease an additional parking close by.
I, I have a further question.
Boy, nobody's answered my question.
Trying.
Does the staff feel comfortable with the 1 to 150?
Staff recommended approval of the request, of their, of the SUP request for 1 to 100. So, yes, we're comfortable with the recommended approval at that time.
1 to 100?
1 to 150.
1 to 150.
Although this is not the exact item that we recommended for the SUP recommended approval based on that they met the parking, met the parking requirements of one parking space for every 150 square feet of floor area.
Okay. We can do that and then there are 150 and then he can do whatever he wants to do before, I mean, after that, look for a space, that'd be great.
Okay, I, I, further question, Joel. Further question, I guess, and Danny Warner, a question. Do you know what the occupancy of that building is offhand? It's not been occupied in years.
Commissioner, I don't have those numbers right now because plans haven't been submitted. Once I, I may look at the floor plan, I can calculate that. But to answer your question, at this particular point, I'm estimating that the occupant level would be around, I'm guessing at this point, about 1,900.
At a time, at any particular time?
Correct.
Okay. And question for you, sir. So, what is the expected workforce? You said that it's going to be 24/7.
Yeah, I think they're forecasting about 250 around per shift. Maybe he knows more.
In my discussions with the site selection consultant for this company, they can go upwards of, well, the building won't fit more than about 400 work stations. So, that will tell you what the, the maximum number of employees making phone calls is. It would be about 400 per shift.
Okay, so, further question then. On item 12, is the recommendation for 1 to 100 or 1 to 150?
Well, item 12, which is the amendment to the zoning ordinance to, staff recommended for, just to add a traffic impact analysis. That was the amendment, but the P&amp;Z board is only recommended to go with the 1 to 100 at the meeting. Staff has recommended the 1 to 150, Commissioner.
Okay, so the P&amp;Z said, we would like 1 to 100, and you're saying staff is comfortable with 1 to 150?
Well, the P&amp;Z sort of took them in the wrong order too, didn't they? They sort of painted themselves into a corner.
Yeah, if you read the minutes, the minutes reflect that they painted themselves in a corner.
Okay, are there any other, is there any other public hearing that would like to speak for or against this amendment to the ordinance? Hearing now, a closing public hearing. Go to item B. Consider and take action to approve and adopt an order on first reading amending the City of Arlington zoning ordinance number 07-27, section 70.05, the City's permit process to establish standard conditions for a call center and office of district.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of City of Arlington, ordinance number 7-27, section 70, applies to specific use permit process to establish standing conditions for a call center and office of district, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
And so, do we need to amend? Do we need?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
What we're, what we're asking to, to pass an amendment, and at this point, the amendment's only for the, a traffic impact?
Correct.
So, you, you would have us pass it only for the traffic impact, not for the 100?
If that's what you, you are proposing, yes.
Because right now, right now, it's written to a 100.
Right, that's what, we included what the P&amp;Z board recommended, but if that's what you, you only.
We need to amend it to be 150.
That's what I'm.
Yeah. Whoever makes the motion needs to move to amend the ordinance.
That's why I ask. I like to make the motion.
To approve through the ordinance with the change to save every 150 square feet.
Then I'll make the motion that we approve this ordinance, but with an amendment that on the parking, instead of 100, it's 150 per 100, for, for.
150 square feet.
150 square feet per space.
And I would second that.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay, now we'll go to item 11, which is a public hearing. Consider ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a call center at the building located at 2200 Hay Drive and an office of district bearing a legal description of lot 1. Lot 1, Haney Medical Capital subdivision, lot 2, Lot 1, Haney Medical Capital 2 subdivision. Robert Gandy.
Commissioners, the amendment is a question of specific use permits, which will basically run over the land, run over the land and allow a call center out of existing, a two-story and total of 40,000, a little over 40,000 square foot building. Generally, the call center, generally, the amendment is proposing to lease the building, which is a former Valley Diagnostic Clinic, to operate a call center to this company, which is proposing a year or one to employ approximately about 220 employees, which would be operating in two different shifts. Both shifts would be from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And of course, the second shift would be from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The request was reviewed by the appropriate city departments. Neither department's having the objection to the request subject to complying with the appropriate city codes. The engineer at the department is requesting a traffic impact analysis to be submitted when we prior to appearing there, certificate of occupancy. This is the proposed site plan. As you can see, there's currently a 262 parking spaces and are proposing to add 10 additional parking in the rear of the property to meet the current parking requirements, which are total of 272 parking spaces. As you can see, the area is surrounded by mostly medical offices, with the exception of the northeast corner, which has some residential use. This is a view of the property from the north, which is a, you can see, a former Valley Diagnostic Clinic. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z commission. Staff is recommending approval, subject to providing and maintaining the required parking and also complying with the appropriate city regulations. Again, as you know, the P&amp;Z board is only recommended an additional condition of, of the parking to be based on one parking space for every 100 square feet of floor area. I'll take your question.
If you could back your photos up a couple to the first one with the heavy dark lines. One more. There you go. So, now, did they also own that strip of, that narrow strip of land from Ed Carey into the property?
Yeah, they do.
And will that be opened up either for parking or for access into or from Ed Carey?
It has an access, but it currently connects to, I guess, the parking lot. As you can see, this little drive right here, it goes into the church parking lot.
Yes.
So, this, this strip right here is a strip that you're referring to, but the opening actually approaches into the church property.
Because I've seen that sign for sale for that strip for the longest time and I happened to drive by today and that sign is down on the ground and I was just curious.
It's a, it's a utility.
Okay, it's a utilities.
Yeah, they're electrical and I think sewer runs through there.
Okay, so you would not pave over it or any, any of that sort?
This gives us a great location for a sign.
Okay.
Okay. Public hearing. Item A, public hearings. Anyone who likes to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing now, a closing public hearing. Go to item B. Just consider and take action to approve and adopt an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a call center and office district that they've described properly.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 7-27, the City of Arlington, to issue a specific use permit to Robert Gandy, forward to allow a call center at the building located at 2200 Hay Drive and an office of district bearing a legal description of lot 1, block 1, Haney Medical Capital subdivision, and lot 2, block 1, Haney Medical Capital 2 subdivision, subject to one, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces in accordance with the parking ratio of one parking space for every, and this will have to be noted in your approval list. It says 100 square feet. That will be 150 square feet of floor area. Two, submit a traffic impact analysis prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Three, must pass a fire inspection prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Four, comply with the requirements administered by the building inspections, engineering, planning and zoning, and environmental health departments. And five, in the event that there is a change of use in the building or any portion of the building changes to a use other than a call center and the new proposed use requires a specific use permit in the off, in the office district, then a new specific use permit would be required, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
So moved with the amendment attached to it, that it strike the 1 to 100 square feet and make it 1 to 150 square feet.
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item 13, public hearing. Consider the approval of the final replat of Wal-Mart subdivision being 6.285 comprising lot 1, block 1, bearing the same legal description, located at 706 Dixie Lane Road. I have Victor from the wireless.
Mayor Commissioners, the amendment is proposing to replat an existing one-lot commercial subdivision into a two-lot commercial subdivision. This is the two lots, one and two. It's located on the west side of Dixie Lane Road, south of Expressway 83. The request has met all the requirements of final plat checklist for a replat. Staff has recommended approval of the request.
A, it's a public hearing. I want to, the public hearing. Is there anyone who likes to speak for or against this replat? Hearing now, a closing public hearing. Go to item B. Consider and take action to approve the final replat of Wal-Mart subdivision.
I don't believe I have, is this item 13?
Item 13, yeah.
I don't have, I don't have.
It's not an ordinance, it's just, it's just required to help the county.
Is there a motion to approve the replat?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item 14, consider and take action to recommend to the City Commission a variance request to the City of Arlington subdivision ordinance number 07-28, section 4.1.6, with regards to five-foot sidewalk required on Expressway 83, front of Road. Propose, Robert Sebacker, number 2 subdivision bearing a legal description of 3.49, one anchors out of block 154 and 6.51 acres out of block 1535. Adams Garden subdivision C, located on the south side of Expressway 83 and the west corner of Tan Lane and front of Road. African Hill, we're seeing.
Mayor Commissioners, the amendment is requesting a variance to the five-foot sidewalk that's required. It's a one-lot subdivision, five-foot sidewalk required on the right way along Frontage Road 83 to propose a commercial lot subdivision. As you can see, it's located just like the, actually, the corner of Tan Lane and the Expressway. The hardship in this case is when you go from Tan Lane all the way down to Spur 54, there is no sidewalks in the area. The subject area currently doesn't support any crosswalk or curb ramps. A similar variance was granted in 2011 for the subdivision directly located to the east of this property. Staff has recommended approval. The P&amp;Z commission also recommends approval of the variance request.
So, this means that we do not want any sidewalks in that area?
Correct.
And this is actually Frontage Road on, on, on the express line?
Correct.
Is there a motion to approve the variance?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item 15, consider and take action to accept or reject bids in a work contract for CDVG's street improvements overlay bid number 2414, or ask the mayor to execute the contract.
I'm with you, Mayor. Commissioner, say manager. It's approved in the waiting action plan for CDVG block grant funds. The City of Arlington solicited bids for the street improvements, including census tract 102.1, block group 1, census tract 106.1, block group 1. Funding will be used for street overlays. Approximately 1.38 lane miles will be improved. Streets are Wes Gale from Frontage Road to N, Wes Kennedy from N to N, Campbell from Bonito to N, Duval from N to N, Bonito Road from Loop 189 to Duval. Three companies submitted bids. The lowest bid was from FJW Construction. Had to review our bids and reference checks. CDVG and the Engineering Department recommend the bid be awarded to FJW contingent upon pending eligibility determination and approval of their subcontractor in the amount of $187,452.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
So moved, Mayor.
Accept staff's recommendation and award contract. Got a motion?
Sir, second. I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item 16, consider and take action to authorize the mayor to have the City of Arlington execute the submission of a general victim assistance grant to the criminal justice division governor's office to secure funds for a crime victim liaison. Chief.
Mayor, City Commission, greetings. The departments are requesting authorization to submit a grant application to the office of the governor to secure funds for a crime victim liaison. The total amount of the project is $49,875. This would include a $39,900 award from the governor's office and then there would be a $9,975 match from the city. That match would come from a office space that's given to the crime victim liaison.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the grant submission?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Chief. Item 17, consider and take action to approve third amendment for license agreement with American Tower, modification of communications tower equipment of heliax cable from one and a quarter inch to one and five eighths inch located at Harlins Number 3, Texas Tower Site, 4128 New Hampshire Road, Harlins, Texas, for an additional cost of $25 per month. Especially, I have the third amendment for license agreement, authorize the mayor to execute the amendment.
Mayor, I don't feel that far chief here, but I'll try to give you a quick.
Okay.
Far chief.
Settle the front row, if you want to give us.
Mayor Commissioners, say manager, good evening. Now, what this is, this is, when we approved the, the new radio equipment, when they're installing that, they put a, a larger antenna up there to increase the signal strength. And that larger antenna, they want to change the cable in, in that purchase. The cable was a one and a quarter and they want to raise it to the one and five eighths. And American Tower wants to charge $25 for that larger cable.
Is that 25 or 25 per inch?
No, 25 per month.
Per month?
Per month.
And who's paying for the cable?
Police.
Who's paying for the cable?
We own the cable. The city owns the cable.
And is this from the ground to the tower or is this?
It's from the ground to the antenna. It's around 480 feet.
And that actually requires an amendment to the lease to change the diameter of the cable. They're good.
Wow.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
All those who favor say aye. Ayes opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right. Item 18, consider and take action to adopt a resolution to support development by National Order on Cultural Development Zone. Walter, do the lead of the City of Brownsville, Texas, and Dr. Morris, go. Creation of BID coordinating board to promote and plan the development of BID zone. This is something that I talked about in the city address and that Dr. Crowell forwarded a copy of this resolution. Commissioner Hill, warn, asked that we put this on the agenda. Mark Crowell is the dean of the business school at UT Brownsville, who's been doing a lot of work on this. We, not only did we attend the summit back in December, but the last two days, the Assistant Secretary of Commerce, Walter, Assistant Secretary of Commerce has been here the last two days talking about the, some of those issues and trying to get him educated upon, about creating this. So, there's a lot of, thank you, Walter Mastian, very interesting, accomplished career, service man there with the U.S. Department of Commerce. And so, we had a meeting yesterday with him, with representatives of the Morris and the Brownsville, the City of Brownsville, along with the representatives of UT Brownsville to talk, educate them about what we're, about this concept of trying to create a manufacturing zone. zone that might be located near the area of Los Indios Free Trade Bridge where we have the Harlingen had some interest in the bridge. So I urge you, urge the commission to adopt this resolution. It really just, you know, supports the development of it, to start working on it, then commit us to anything financially and just to create a joint board, to start working to develop it.
I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like, signed. Item, the motion carries. Item 19, consider take action to approve an agreement with the City of Mattamoros, Tamaulipas, to lease office space at the Los Inyo Building located 502 East Tyler and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Mayor Commissioners, yesterday Commissioner Sanchez and myself had the opportunity to visit with the Mayor of Mattamoros. They did approve a resolution to officially designate the Mattamoros as the sister city to the City of Arlington, so she'll be coming over to sign that agreement in the next couple of weeks. We did have a request from them to set up shop in our, in one of, in the Los Inyo Building. Basically, they have an international representative in Texas that, in which they want to handle investment, tourism, and try to kind of grow the region and, and work with Mattamoros as well as with the region. So we do have Reynaldo del Toro, who is representing the City of Mattamoros here today. He has seen, we have offered an office space over at the Los Inyo Building. It's a space, an office of about 250 square feet, more or less approximately, that's located, that's located adjacent to the Vitos Statistics Office, which they have seen and they have liked. We would ask that, that the commission consider this lease agreement with them. I think it would strengthen the ties with, with Mattamoros and with the region. It would help us and it would help them as well. We're proposing or asking the commission to consider a lease agreement for that office space. Originally, we had a one-year agreement. I have heard back from the, the Mayor of Mattamoros, they're requesting that we could do a two-year agreement with an automatic one-year renewal, because that, that kind of coincides with the term of their, the mayor's term. They have a three-year term in office. We are proposing that we, we do the lease agreement and, and lease it to them a dollar a year. And I think it's staff's anticipation that we would not be incurring any additional costs. I mean, we have the utilities in place, we've got, so they would be utilizing what we already have in, already there. And you do have a copy of the agreement before you.
Do they plan on having a full-time employee occupying that office?
Well, I think Reynaldo is going to be.
At least three days.
Two days?
Three.
Three days a week?
Yes.
I, I think he's going to be the representative that would be utilizing the office, but he would be in and out typically.
Okay.
His proposal is to, to have a more, more, more close to Mattamoros because that just way they come in from Massa Plan, Mexico, they'll be straight to the bridge, Los Indios. That's what they're trying, we're trying to promote the, the bridge, Los Indios, so we can have some more, more trucks coming in and more commercial trucks.
I also want to point out, I think, you know, the importance of Mattamoros to our region. You know, Mattamoros is considered the second largest and second most populous city in the state of Tamaulipas. According to the 2010 census, they had a population of approximately 500,000. The, if you include the floating population, they have about 700 habitants in the, in the city. They're the 39th largest city in Mexico and they anchor the second largest metropolitan area in Tamaulipas. And it is one of the fastest-growing cities in Mexico with one of the fastest-growing economies in the country. Basically, their economy is based on international trade with the U.S. through NAFTA and it is home to one of the most promising industrial sectors in Mexico due to the presence of the maquiladora industry. They also have an automotive industry. They, they host accessory plants for brands such as General Motors, Ford, Chrysler, BMW, Mercedes-Benz, et cetera, others. So we, we certainly think we can, you know, kind of coordinate the trade and tourism and promote economic opportunities for both sides and this gives us an opportunity to do, to do that.
I know I had a chance to visit with the, the Mayor of Tamaulipas. I asked what, what was their, their main, what was number one employer and was the maquila business? And they have, it's a growing, growing business.
And we have a, an interest to, to develop with them because this, this new road that's being, is already complete, basically, that is what they call Corridor Inter-Oceanico Matzatlan-Mattamoros. The interoceanic corridor is probably the largest construction feat Mexico's undertaken, I say, since the, they built the pyramids, because it comes all the way from Matzatlan across the Sierra Occidental to Durango and it makes getting to the East Coast or anywhere else in the United States now closer to come through Harlingen or Brownsville than to go through Nobales, Arizona, which is the way, the traditional route. And they accomplished that by spending probably close to a billion dollars to build a road that has a concrete suspension bridge that you can stick the Eiffel Tower under. And it was a pretty monumental undertaking and so it's going to change the way this area looks and the business in this area because it's coming.
And the other thing is the Panama Canal is being expanded, except it's not. In the last two weeks, all work has stopped. There'll be a four-year delay at least of expanding the Panama Canal, which makes this highway also much more valuable.
So I think it all, I think this is another kind of step to building a stronger relationship and really talking about trying to work cooperatively with the cities in our, in the inner county, Brownsville and Mattamoros, and fits together with this whole, the BID resolution that we just passed. And so it's another good step and I, I think it's a good idea.
Mayor, can I?
We have a, we have a really, yeah, just want to say one, one more thing. We have a very, I think, a really good relationship with an outstanding person in the Mayor of Mattamoros. She is a dynamic leader and, and we look forward to working with her much more in the future. Joe?
Okay. Mayor, for the record, I was San Rubio. I recognize the value of what Mexico is bringing and how much Mexico is going to bring to, to this area. The only question I have is, it's actually like for the staff, which is the city attorney, which is a legality of, of giving out electrical and space, et cetera, for a dollar a year based on fair market value. I would rather, in the future, like to see the CBD combine their offices, you know, with, you know, because there is a budget for them. But I, I do, you know, I'm not aware that what's being done tonight is, is correct. Thank you.
It wouldn't require any additional cost for the electrical because we will be utilizing whatever, it'll be the same activity, basically.
All right. Well, what I would do is I would entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement and include, and also a finding that the lease agreement, that lease agreement and the amount of lease agreement is in the furthest important policy of fostering trade with Mexico that Harlingen is trying to support. So just say, I think that will address Joe's concern. So just say, "Salute."
Are we, are we looking at the two years? That's what they were looking at?
Yeah. Yes, that's, as recommended by the staff.
And Rick, you have reviewed this?
I have. Yeah, we worked on it today with the city secretary. We, you know, there may be some minor tweaking, but I think because of the two years, we'll go back and make a couple of minor adjustments to it, but it's just a basic.
And you're comfortable with the verbiage and everything?
You got a motion?
I'm making a.
Second? We have a second? Well, Victor made a motion. I'm sure Sanchez made the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like, signed. Motion carries. Okay, good. Item 20, war appointments, are there any?
I would like to reappoint Claudia Munchaka to the. I'm trying to remember what the name of the mayor is.
Yeah, there we go. Excuse me.
I think the mayor's.
Community Development Advisory Board. Sorry, I'm blanked on that.
Okay.
I have a new appointment to the Community Development Advisory Board, Shane Allen.
Anybody else down here? I'd like to appoint, reappoint Richard Frankie to Airport Advisory Board and also to reappoint Julie Hizelle, she was filling a short, unexpired, or term and so to point her to a full term to the running Airport Advisory Board. And then also I'd like to appoint to, like us to appoint to the tax increment, tax increment finance boards, the following people, it's the people that were former commissioners are on that board, so we need to update this list. Victor Berial, Felix Sanchez, Mike Mesmar, Victor Leal, Commissioner Victor Leal, Aaron Ziege, and Kyle Orgera. If I can repeat those. Victor Berial, Felix Sanchez, Commissioner Michael Mesmar, Commissioner Victor Leal, Aaron Ziege, and Kyle Orgera. Is there a motion to approve war appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like, signed. Motion carries. All right. The next item is executive session for section 551, section 551.71, consultation with their city attorney and our city's litigation counsel seek legal advice regarding the equal appointed opportunity commission charge number 451-2013-02511. It's the city of Arlington and attorney consultation for section 551.71, Texas Department of Code, provide legal advice and counsel respect the city's rights, privileges, duties, and obligations in connection with contemplated changes and modifications to the appointed department head positions in the city's civil service departments and related matters. Is there a motion? They would go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like, signed. Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the city commission is going to go into the back room and consult with our attorney on a couple of issues and then we'll be back. All right, we're out of executive session at 8:32. Next item on the agenda is to, number 22, consider take action to approve a settlement between the city of Harlingen and Roxanne P. Quintero regarding equal appointed opportunity commission charge number 451-2013-02511.
I'd move to approve the settlement agreement between the city of Harlingen and Roxanne P. Quintero regarding EELC charge number 451-2013-02511, subject to the terms discussed with counsel in executive session.
Sir, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, motion carries. Item 23, consideration and appropriate action in connection with the creation of public safety director executive management position to oversee and supervise the city's fire and police civil service departments, including modifications to the city of Arlington organizational chart. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. opposed, like, signed. Motion carries. Item 24, citizen communication.
I got Ronald Osano.
You have the mayor.
Joe Rubio.
Mayor, as the commission, for the record, was San Rubio Jr., went through an, I think, the Oklahoma, Texas, 78552. Once again, a total disrespect for citizen communication. You have several firefighters, you all made a decision. I think you should have, you have several firefighters in the audience. I'm sure they have something to say about the subject of matter, but let's move on to what I'm going to talk about right now. You know, the mayor in the state of the city addressed not too long ago announced the increase in the general fund revenue. How did it increase? One and a half million dollar increase through traffic enforcement, thanks to this trafficking developed by Chief Mayor. Chief Mayor allows violations of FLSA policies. In July of last year, this city government approved $70,000 a payout, but yet it continues the FLSA violations. I don't think Mr. Mayor and other personnel from the city have been schooled in what FLSA is about. He breaks all the rules. He, he's allowing his department to harass a female detective who is now a patrol officer. And he's, he's, the, she's being tormented. There's a lot of things going on within the police department. It goes back to the same old things. If you don't change the leadership in the future and you look for a quality police chief, one who knows how to act with the rules, not one who breaks the rules and violates the rules and even does criminal conduct, you're going to run into the same problem. You're going to have the parts of the police department with a whole lot of problems in the future. Commissioner Sanchez is familiar, let me just finish up, two seconds. Commissioner Sanchez is familiar with his officers and where his son was tased and nothing was done about it. Thank you.
Next.
Luciano Rubio.
We're only related about blood. Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Today's agenda, the city administration is seeking approval to hire a public safety director that will oversee both the fire, police department operations and personnel. It was just recently that this governing body took action to approve an additional assistant city manager position. The purpose for this new position was so that the city manager would have two assistant city managers that would be tasked with an even distribution of departments from the city, including the accountability for the police and fire department. Now, the city administration requests an approval of creating a position of public safety director. The creation of public safety director seems to overlap what was already put in place, which would be an unnecessary expense. Members of the police and fire department are questioning this move, especially since no information has been shared with them as to the intent of creating this position and how it would impact the current rank structure of the both organizations. For those members that are striving to advance their respective careers, they would ultimately be faced with glassing in effect once again. In other words, no opportunities to advance to a department head position since the creation of a public safety director position would virtually terminate the existence of these two positions. Furthermore, only two out of the 110 firemen and zero from the 134 police officers will meet, will not meet the requirements for the public safety position. The reason being is that the position requires a D.O.S. certification, meaning police and fire certified, and currently only the two fire marshals have the credentials for that position. Any aspirations of an internal hiring, especially from the police department, would be non-existent. The only way that the police officers would meet the selection criteria for the public safety director possibly is, would be allowed to attend a fire academy, which would be senseless because they don't fight fires. That's not our job. But that would be one of the requirements for the position. Both departments have excelled in the current work environment. The police department has been recognized for national night out. Can I continue or am I too?
Well, you, 30, 30 seconds.
Go ahead.
You can ramp it up in 30 seconds.
Okay, just basically, the, the police department has been recognized for national night out, 13th in the nation, that's a high achievement for our population. We've also been recognized for our status of Texas best practice, as you well know, and other achievements of receiving. and other achievements of receiving grant funding from different entities that alleviated expenses incurred by the city. So the present rank structure that we currently have right now allows us to do that and to go to a different direction. When things aren't broken, it's under, there's no understanding for that. Thank you for your time.
All right, then, nothing further. We stand adjourned. Thank you very much.